All right, I'd like to call the planning commission meeting for the city of Garden City. Together, it's Thursday, April 8th, 2021. Roll call, please. Call the order.
Chairperson May?
Absentee and excused.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call?
No, we did the roll call.
Okay. First item will be approval of agenda. And remember, we have two agendas there. You want the one where H has been deleted.
H1.
Zoning ordinance amendment. You don't want that one, you want the other one that was on the table in front of you.
I make a motion that we accept the, approve the agenda, the revised agenda.
Second.
Aye. Commissioner?
Roll, please.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Vice Chair Steenberg.
Aye. Okay. At this point, we ask if there's anything that's not on the agenda.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Okay. Like a motion for approval of the minutes? And if there's any additions or deletions that need to be added at that time.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 11th meeting.
Second. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Steenberg.
Aye. Okay. Now, public comments for anything that's not on the agenda. If you haven't seen the agenda, you can get a copy at the short table over on the right there. Anybody have any comments or anything they'd like to bring up that's not on the agenda? Sir, did you have something? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Next item of business will be the request for special land use, recommendation on site plan approval to establish a hobby shop with an outdoor remote control race course at 6332 Middle Belt Road in the C2 community district. Comments by anybody? Does everybody have an opportunity to look at the latest blueprint and site plan for that? Okay. Mario, would you like to give us your information on that?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to consider the special use and site plan approval for the proposed hobby shop and outdoor race course located at 6332 Middle Belt. So this is a 2.27 acre site with two existing buildings. It's comprised of three lots in total. And the applicant would be constructing a, has begun refurbishing the two existing structures. In addition, he'd like to construct an outdoor remote control car race course to the rear or east of the existing buildings. And they would also construct a new parking lot to the south on the two unapproved lots south of the existing building that fronts on Middle Belt. We have reviewed this a couple times. And the first thing we take a look at is the special use criteria. And the first of those criteria is make sure the use is compatible with the adjacent uses. On page two of my review letter, you see the existing uses in the area. We go over the zoning. And I do, I would note that after our previous discussion, the applicant has submitted a revised site plan and they have permitted, have revised the proposed screening. So on sheet CN2 of the March 2021 site plan, they are now proposing a masonry wall not only along that southern boundary with the residence, but along, excuse me, the eastern boundary with the residence, but also the southern boundary with the property. It's zoned multifamily, but it's actually being utilized as an office right now. But they are proposing the same required masonry wall along that boundary line.
Okay.
In addition, they would be providing arborvitae's on the interior of this east and south wall. They'd be planted 36 inches on center. And in addition to that, they've, they would be installing a six-foot-high synthetic resin fence on the northern property line of Maplewood. But that fence has been revised to be shifted to the south about 10 feet to allow a landscape buffer. So when traffic and residents walk along Maplewood, there'll be a 10-foot landscape buffer, the fence, and then the outdoor RC car course.
And he has the room for that?
He does have the room for that. The site plan does show that it, that the site could still function for his use while providing the adequate buffer. And he is proposing the requisite amount of trees, two trees per 40 lineal foot along Maplewood, along with six shrubs per that 40 lineal foot. So the buffer as proposed is now in compliance with what we would require in, for that area. In addition to compatibility, we've talked in the past about the hours of operation. The, the outdoor course will operate from 9:00 AM to dusk. And the indoor will operate from 9:00 to, I believe it's 8:00 PM. But the indoor course isn't as much of an issue, mainly because the question before you is about compatibility, once again, with the adjacent uses. And whether the cars and the activity conducted outside is going to, once again, be compatible with the residents that live to the east of this property. So now, the revised site plan does show buffer, the required masonry walls and fences along all three sides. And they are oper, they will be shutting down at dusk. So for you, it's about that compatibility issue. Furthermore, we look into compatibility with the master plan. We discussed this before. The issue before us is the fact that this site is in the DDA and it is in our planned CBD. So we mainly have planned this area for commercial-type activities. So the proposed, you know, retail shop and the indoor track, all those type of uses, they're definitely compatible with the goals of the master plan. However, it's the, that outdoor use and how intensive that outdoor use would be that would, that is a question as to whether it's compatible with the master plan. The applicant has noted that these aren't, in this, in this industry, you can either have fuel, liquid fuel cars that tend to be very loud, and then you have electric cars. And this would be only for electric cars. That note is on the site plan, so any approval would restrict him to, and his customers to only operating electric cars, which would be much more compatible. And in theory, be in compliance with the, with the noise ordinance standards. There are some specific regulations when it comes to open-air businesses, which this is qualified as. They're in compliance with a lot area and a lot width and that sort of thing. And they have revised sheet CN2 to show a required 10-foot landscape buffer both along Middle Belt and Maplewood Avenue. Now, that's on sheet CN2. And that, that proposed configuration is in compliance. The applicant has proposed an alternative on sheet CS2. And this shows a modified landscape buffer. It's not as deep. It's only about three to five feet at most in depth. And it's comprised mainly now of 10 shrubs for that 40 lineal feet, rather than the combination of trees and shrubs that are on sheet CN2. So we would recommend that any approval be contingent upon utilizing the buffer proposed on CN2, because that is what's required. That's what's been utilized on other sites, and that's what's, something that's required in the area. And not only that, the issue might be that the 10-foot buffer might use more area, but this 10-foot buffer will not negatively impact the parking lot configuration, because the parking lot will still be able to have a sufficient amount of parking spaces. So I don't feel that the CN2 is going to be any kind of negative. It's beneficial, because it provides parking and it provides the buffer that we require. The CS2 is just an option they want to present to you, and I'll let the applicant speak to that option, but at the same time, I believe the CN2 option is best. Once again, we're looking at other special use review criteria. The, you know, the intent is to not interfere, that any proposed special use not interfere with the existing uses in the area. And they are mainly commercial to the, to the east, excuse me, to the west on Middle Belt Road, to the south. You have the high school to the north. It's just that idea of the residence to the east and whether you feel as a board that this would be able to function in this area and be compatible with the adjacent property. One other issue with regards to not just the noise to consider and the buffering, he has buffered visually, but is the lighting. Sheet E1 shows that there are five lights proposed on the, existing, and they will be still utilized on the eastern elevation of the building that will shine eastward. And a note states that it's going to be, we angled to not shine beyond the property. The issue is that our ordinance requires all lighting to be shielded and directed downward so that the point source is not visible from the adjacent property. While the light might not reach the adjacent property just because of the length and distance, the issue is the light source, because more often than not, the light source is the one that is more obtrusive to adjacent properties. And there are instances you find throughout the city about this, and we've been trying very diligently to try and get these other uses to come into compliance, however, the lights have been there for that way. So modern site plan standards are to have all lighting shielded and directed downward so that the, that the point source does not extend below the horizontal plane of a metal casing. And so it's, that's called shielded and directed downward, and that's best for adjacent property. So to ensure compatibility, we would recommend utilizing shielded and directed downward lighting only, no angled lighting at all. That's mainly the issues with regards to special use, it's that compatibility. We will say that when it comes to point G, whether the enhancement of the surrounding environment will be completed by the applicant, we do believe now, as proposed, with the buffering and, and the amount of landscaping involved, and provided there's the 10-foot buffer on Maplewood and Middle Belt, that the site would enhance, enhance the area. So in the end, when it comes to the special use issue, the open-air business, you must come to the determination that it will be in substantial compliance with that special use criteria. The most important of that will be compatibility with the adjacent uses. And we have our summary of our findings on page five. So I can get into a little bit of the site plan issues as well. Those are more of a, specific with regards to how the site will be developed. Just real quickly, once again, he's revised the plan. When it comes to paragraph three on page six about the architecture and the building design, they have indicated that the, that they will be working in concert with the DDA board in terms of the colors for the proposed modification. And this is, I think that's a good idea that they consult with and, and take consideration of the DDA, because they will be located in the DDA. So that's a good thing. But we would note that the applicant should provide, when that color is provided, that it be noted on the revised site plan, just so that way we have official record of what the light, the colors would be. It is a large building. Right now, the main, the building that's larger is the, the eastern building that is, it's one-story, but it's about 20 to 25 feet tall. It's more of a warehouse-type situation, because the exterior material is a vertical, vertical siding, vertical metal siding. So it's, it's not normally something we would approve, approve going forward for new construction in the city. However, it's an existing building and the applicant is going to attempt to refurbish it. Whether it can be refurbished in such a way, I mean, I guess it is possible. I mean, you can treat that with, you know, rust protection, that sort of thing. In theory, it could work. So it would just be a matter of the effort made to make sure it's sufficiently refurbished is going to be the issue there. When it comes to parking, there's 34 parking spaces on sheet CN2 on the north, 39 on the south. The, the site itself, when we, the issue was looking into how much space is going to be occupied by the customers. And the applicant has revised this site plan, and it does show now designated spaces, not just, just on the outside track, but on the inside track. So when we do the calculations and show that table, they are in compliance with the retail parking, compliance with the office parking, compliance with the open-air business parking requirements, because they have a 4,000-square-foot outdoor area that will, based on our calculation, based on the ordinance, requires 20 spaces, so they're in compliance with that. The only issue is that I need some additional expert opinion from the fire marshal, because the indoor area has a designated pit area, plus there's two indoor tracks. That's about 5,659 square feet, but because this is an interior building in the building, I really think the fire code might, the fire code would dictate how much customers could fit in the building, but it's always a balance between that and the parking capacity. So right now, as, based on allocation of all the other uses and all the other parking, he has 33 spaces that could be allocated for the indoor tracks. So as long as, if the applicant was okay with that, having 33 cars, and 33 cars means there, we calculated as three occupants per car for that requirement. So therefore, in theory, there'd be 99 people that could be occupying the two indoor tracks and the indoor pit area. So either we could wait for the fire marshal for their, his input, or if the applicant is okay with indicating that 99 people would be in the tracks, in addition to all the people in the retail shop and the office, that's something that could be determined tonight. And therefore, his capacity could be finalized. One note, when it comes to parking, still, the applicant has indicated that southern parking lot is an asphalt parking lot, and they're proposing the use as a temp, as a, as a outdoor course, dual-use parking lot for an outdoor course. And it's going to be depending on the frequency of that use. If it's consistently being utilized for outdoor racing of his car, of a customer's cars, then you really can't count those 39 parking spaces for meeting his requirements, and that would be an issue. As long as applicant is, is okay with the idea of only doing the outdoor asphalt racing in the, in the asphalt parking lot based on a temporary use permit, then that would be appropriate, because temporary uses are something that all businesses go through. It's something as, they just let us know the time period and how long it's going to be and that sort of thing, and something we know, so it's limited. So as long as it's a limited aspect of that track, it's something that it could occur, because the temporary use ordinance would regulate that. But that's a question that needs to be answered about, the temp, that dual-use parking lot. Finally, when it comes to grading and stormwater compliance, the applicant has provided a diagram of the, of the outdoor track. The track will have to be reviewed by the engineer for grading to ensure stormwater. The applicant has indicated that they're, they're going to, they're going to angle and direct the water as such so that it will flow towards the interior. However, it really needs to be reviewed by the engineer, because the engineer needs to have precise information, because we can't have any kind of flooding of adjacent property based on the grade changes on the site. So engineering approval should be a contingency of a site plan approval. And then, my letter talks about, once again, about lighting. Very, I think it's very important to address the lighting to make sure that it's not, that the point source is shielded and directed downward. And then, finally, there's a dumpster, excuse me, there's a dumpster enclosure proposed, but that dumpster enclosure, we just need the cross-section details for that construction to make sure it's compliant with the ordinance. So those are the issues, both special use issues and site plan issues. And I will take any questions you have at the appropriate time.
Questions, comments? Do they have anything? I got two items. Number one, I'd like to see the DDA sign off on the site plan to verify that they have, in fact, approved what gets put on the site plan for colors in that area. And the other item is, is there, is there any notation in any of this that indicates irrigation for all these plantings?
I will double-check on the landscape plan, but I don't believe so. In addition to that issue, the landscape plan does need revisions with regards to showing the specific size of the proposed plantings. So that would be, so I don't believe it shows that, that other important detail, the irrigation. So that's something that needs to be included on a revised site plan.
Also, I'd like to ask the question. If it, with the type of landscaping they're going to use, arborvitae is one of the things I heard, does that require irrigation, or is, does our normal climate provide enough irrigation for that type of plant to where a separate irrigation system wouldn't be required?
To the best of my knowledge, when it comes to brand-new commercial installations, we do require irrigation, because the, the level of control and the moisture level is controlled by that system. So they'll turn on appropriately. So like, if we have a drier summer, it'll turn on more, but when it's, we have more of a wet summer, then it's turned on less. But that can only happen if the system is in place.
Okay. So we need irrigation. We need some indication of irrigation on our recommendation.
Yeah, and to the best of my knowledge, that's relatively, you know, it's, it's laying down of permeable piping in the, in the beds and a connection to the building, and I, so I don't believe it's too extensive or onerous. It's something that will protect the investment they've made in all that landscaping. It'll make sure that all that landscaping doesn't die and has to get replaced. So it's an important aspect of protecting the investment.
Okay. So under site plan recommendations, we're looking about colors on number A. On number B, we're looking about size of landscape materials. Under C, we want, we want our light levels and our shielding identified. And dumpster enclosure details. Do we have a, do we keep a standard definition of our dumpster enclosure, like a mini blueprint that shows all the details with the ballards, the concrete pad, the, I believe, three-foot, six-inch concrete footing in front and those kind of things?
We don't necessarily have a standard detail, but, but our ordinance and our general practices include all those details. The, the concrete has to be reinforced concrete 10 feet out from the exterior. There has to be ballards in there. The, the, the walls themselves have to material match the building, and then the gates have to be of a durable material. We've lately been allowing some of the more harder, the name escapes me, some of the more, the synthetic woods, rather than, but not allow, yeah, thank you, tracks.
On to the chain.
Yeah, yeah, instead of, but without, but no, no, no stockade fencing or wood fencing. Is that?
We have strength in aesthetics.
Correct.
And zero maintenance.
Right. And it's.
Because it won't get maintained anyhow.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Do you think it would be helpful to the applicants to have like a, a small blueprint that details what we just talked about with the dumpster enclosure? So when we talk about dumpster enclosure, we can say, this is what's required, instead of detailing the individual items, just, you know? Or is that something that's pretty common in the industry to where we don't need to tell them that? They, they just need to, to know that we want the, the fake wood on the front and we want ballards and?
Well, I would say that while the, the industry does have a lot of pretty common standards, and that you don't necessarily want to have exact, precise details of a closure, because some of them need to be resized for the site, I will say that it's probably imperative that we apply, provide at least some example, because lately, there have been a lot of installations of dumpsters, which are nowhere close to our standards.
Yes.
So I think, I think it is a good idea, and it's something we can provide, the building official can help me determine the most appropriate cross-section detail for those, because that's something that's.
That would be in the C.
Be helpful. Yeah. And it would be, it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Anything else that you can see that we would need on our recommendation list, other than the items already indicated? I would like, I would like to have added to that list, of course, the DDA sign off on the site plan, once they've talked to the applicant and have arrived at the color spectrum that they want to use there. Other than that, you see anything, anything else? Do you think it requires a full engineering review for the outdoor track for puddling and whatnot?
I really do, just because it's, it's important to get this done right the first time, because the last, it's going to, I imagine it's going to be an extensive, it could be an extensive project. And so rather than, once again, require the initial investment to be changed and have to go through multiple iterations of getting it right, I think an engineer can look at it and, and propose appropriate measures.
Okay, then we'll leave that one in there. Anybody have any questions? Yes?
Just to clarify on the lighting cut sheets, those are, depending on which parking lot, which, which configuration, is that what we're waiting for?
The lighting is more specifically to the, the five proposed on the east side of the proposed building, of the existing building, because right now, the, the site plan sheet E1, I believe, says that they're going to be angled out and just won't shine off the property. And that's not, doesn't meet ordinance requirements, they have to be shielded and directed downward.
Go the front point of view to the, to the adjacent properties.
Right. Because it's that view of the, the light source from the adjacent property that's the problem, that we regulate.
The second question I have is, is the drainage, is this going to fall under the Wayne County storm stuff that we ran into over on Henry Ruff and Cherry Hill? That pretty much shut that project right down.
Yeah. That's why I'm depending on the engineer, because I'll be honest, that when it comes to the wet, what triggers Wayne County full stormwater detention, I have no idea. Because we, because we obviously have other sites in the city, which the existing property owners have been able to do substantial redevelopment without the need for suburban-style detention ponds. And I don't, I mean, I really don't think that's going to be the issue here.
Well, I just don't want the applicant to find out after he's exhausted any more time and money. Like I said, that building that was over there was torn down and they were ready to roll, and when all that Wayne County stuff came through, it's still sitting there.
Right.
There's nothing that's happened. That's been a couple of years, so that could hold, you know, save some grievance if Wayne County's okay. I'm sure the commission's going to be okay.
I'm kind of with Mario on the Wayne County thing. It's hard to determine that. But it seems like he's got enough permeable, permeable surface there, where the engineer is, I'm guessing, going to be mainly concerned with, where's his runoff going to go? We don't want to build it up high here and have the residential over here, and on rainy days, all that mud washes into the guy's driveway.
Right.
It doesn't seem like it's going to concern Wayne County sewer system. It seems more like.
It might be worth a little investigation on.
Yeah. And to the applicants, we've talked to the applicant about this before, and they have noted that the change in grade isn't going to be very significant. It will be of a lower grade, because these are smaller-scale vehicles. But the calculations have to be done, because I don't know how much imp- But the calculations have to be done, because I don't know how much pervious service is back there versus non-pervious. And so the calculation has to be made, maybe the materials that they're going to use will be more pervious than what's already there, and then therefore, it's not an issue. But, but we won't know until the experts determine the right materials and then the right slopes, and then determine the infiltration and all that kind of thing that Wayne County gets into. And it could be to such a degree that the applicant has proposed, by just sloping the track the right way, could work.
Sure.
But we have to make sure, because the last thing we want is to have it not work and then have other adjacent properties flood, and then, then there's going to be more investments.
And with the addition of the sidewalk and the additional parking, it could add up that there's a number of square feet of non-permeable that, that might come into play, so.
Right.
The engineer will make that determination at some point in his evaluation whether Wayne County needs to be brought in or...
Right. And they, they work extensively with Wayne County, so they know when it, what is that trigger.
Eric, Randy, you guys got anything? Diane?
No.
Somebody like to make a...
We do have the applicant and the DDA here, if you want to hear from them, because they have their, they might be able to answer any additional concerns you have.
Sure, why don't you, you come forward and give us your name and...
Good evening. Name's Fred Kanda. I think previously, you've only heard my voice, never seen my face, so, nice to meet you all in person. I do have a couple of points, if I might please.
Sure.
That'll help, I think. On pages of CS3 and CS2, we note several times that they're electric vehicles only. We also note that the materials for the outdoor track are basically existing dirt and clay, which is the soil that we have in this area. So it's, we're not bringing in anything that's gravel or any other hard, non-absorptive material. It's existing dirt and clay. So we're basically going to lower some areas and higher some areas. The, every radio-controlled track is designed, an outdoor track, is designed to direct the water inwards, towards the center of the track, and typically, that's where you find a pond, and there's really nothing else to do with it. We have to be very conscientious of not allowing that moisture for a couple of reasons to escape. One, obviously, adjacent properties would be affected. But number two is that water also helps to keep the dirt and the clay moist, which is something that you, we don't want caked-up dirt, caked-up clay, it just doesn't work very well. So that's the, by nature of what this is, how it has to be built. So a couple of other points to make. We do note that the, in CS3, that the lights are shielded, and modern LEDs, as Mario pointed out, they do direct downwards. I'm not quite sure why we showed the entire distance. I think what the architect was trying to do is explain the distance and how it wouldn't be affected, as opposed to that that would be the distance it would shine. On page seven of Mario's review, there's a parking methodology comment, and if we're in agreement with that, and, and I'm in agreement with that perfectly well. If we do finish the lot for the South, or when we do finish the lot for the South, it's understood that any events would require a special permit. I just want to make these things clear. We did note that all of the landscape material would be per ordinance. The ordinance is pretty clear on what's required. It just seems redundant to continue to state it over and over again. If that's what needs to happen, then by all means, we'll do it, but...
Generally, on the site plan, we name those items just so that everybody's clear on what's required there, and that we all agree. You know, if there's, if there's a problem with certain things, we can work it out at this point, and then it doesn't become a problem where you order such-and-such type of tree, only to find out later on that that can't be used or something.
Sure, understood. So if I might continue, and I apologize for taking your time, but...
No, no.
So on central, between Maplewood and Ford Road, there is exactly one residence on the west side of the road, and it is this residence. That's the only residence. And this residence was originally, the property was originally part of this parcel. It was split off by the original owner to build a residence, knowing that they were backing up to commercial. There's always a comment regarding the transition between the commercial and the residential. And the problem is, there's no way to do that here. There, unless somebody can suggest a pathway to this, but quite honestly, even the residence is not in compliance with the master plan, because that area doesn't call for single-family residence, it calls for transition. So I'm not quite sure how we would reconcile that. Beyond that, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to make comments on the green space on the Maplewood side. On that side, the distance from the curb to our parking lot, to the sidewalk, I'm sorry, is 15 feet, okay? We're going to increase that an additional 10 feet. So that's going to put us a great distance from Maplewood. Technically speaking, by state definition, state law, the right-of-way of Maplewood is 33 feet from center, which is literally the curb. So when we talk about right-of-way of the road, that's the curb of Maplewood. Going in, that's, that doesn't have to do with the easement, or the right-of-way as is considered by the City of Garden City, that's the state definition. Coming in another 10 feet from there seems excessive, which is why we presented two different plans. And I'm not debating the Middlebelt side. This I understand perfectly well. It's a much busier street, without any doubt. But the Maplewood side is relatively low traffic. And quite honestly, the open, the ordinance for open-air business doesn't call for fencing on that side, because there's nothing abutting. But yet, we're doing that, as, as was requested. I just think that going an additional 10 feet in and providing that green space there just seems excessive, quite honestly. Especially since we have the landscape on the outside of any fence to begin with. So pushing it further back doesn't seem sensical, quite honestly. And that's why two plans were presented for your consideration. The other issue that we have is existing fencing. So both residential properties have existing fencing. Synthetic fencing in one case, and I think wood fencing in another. And the owner of the home, that single-family home, happened to speak to one of my employees in the past week and was a bit worried about their backyard turning into a prison camp because of a, basically, what they heard was a concrete wall. And my employee told them, no, it's not a concrete wall, it's just a masonry wall. Because that masonry wall has to extend 150 feet, basically, it's their entire front yard as well. They were very disturbed by that. I thought that they would attend this evening, but apparently, they weren't able to. So that's another consideration. I understand there has to be a divisor, but the question is, what do I do about double fences? Because it exists on both sides. It exists to the east and it exists to the south. So, and I know that double fencing, or a wall and a fence, is not permitted by ordinance. So something's got to give. Sorry, got to forgive me. I, I didn't know about this meeting until yesterday afternoon, so my preparation's a little bit rushed. I apologize.
Doing fine. While you're checking that, Mario, a wall and a fence coexisting? I'm not familiar with that.
No, that's something that unfortunately, I mean, it's not ideal, but it does occur a lot of times, especially on the commercial properties up and down Ford, you know, Ford Road. You know, we have the masonry wall, that's been our standard for years and years and years. And while it's definitely not preferred to have that, that existing fence on the other side, the use of, you know, alternative fencing just isn't as, doesn't provide that buffer from normal, like indoor commercial activity that a, that a masonry wall would provide. You know, when you're having outdoor commercial activity, I think in order to ensure compatibility and just to make sure that the neighbors don't have any kind of issues with the adjacent property, the, our minimum standard of the masonry wall, to me, seems required.
Yeah. That was my thinking as well. Okay.
Quick question, I, I'm not clear on that. Two fences, a wall and a fence, abutting commercial? Or is that two fences, abutting residential?
Yeah, usually, in, in the best-case scenario, the, any existing fence would provide the necessary delineation for the property owners. So in a residential area, if someone already has a stockade fence or even a chain-link fence, usually that works for both neighbors. And then the other property owner, when they want to do, like if, like say it only goes halfway down their property, and they want to continue that fence, you talk to the neighbor, and then you're, you know, you, you come in and get in a permit to put a, put that fence on your side of the property, that sort of thing. And you let it work out, so that you don't have that overlap, and you don't have that dead zone between fences. We do try and work with the property owners in residential areas to do that. The issue is, when it comes to commercial adjacent to residential, that what we're trying to do is not just delineate the side, like where the property lines are, but we're also trying to buffer the commercial from the residential. So a stock, a masonry wall is the standard the city has been using forever along Ford Road and in all our other commercial corridors, because the masonry wall is just, because our commercial property owners are right up on residential and on Ford Road, the masonry wall is just what works. I mean, in terms of, you know, the best-case scenario. Because it buffers against noise and it buffers against the visual aspect, I will say that, you know, it might not be every property owner's cup of tea, but we have to, we can't just consider the existing property owners, we have to consider the future ones. While the current residents, resident in that house right now might be okay with, and say, oh, he doesn't, he doesn't want a masonry wall, the next, the next resident might be, I'm so glad the masonry wall is there, so that way I don't have to see the racetrack. We just don't know. And so we have, we have to plan for the future, so. And that's why the masonry wall has been utilized and proposed up and down Ford Road and up and down commercial corridors in the city.
Not only does it establish a permanence, but it's also a noise block and a headlight block and many other different things along with it. And yes, that's been our standard for quite some time.
And the benefit is, it'll allow the business owner to operate his business in relative, you know, operate his business effectively and not, and hopefully not be inundated by any kind of comments from the adjacent property owners, because he can say, hey, I'm in complete compliance with the ordinance, because I built this masonry wall. So I'm doing what, he's doing his due diligence, and he's doing his good-faith effort to abide by the ordinance if the masonry wall is constructed.
I have a question. Isn't there a gap, like an alley, between the residential home, there's a fence there, and then there's another fence to the business, but there's like a little alley? There's a big gap. Who owns that? Like a...
Actually...
The residential home was encroaching.
Yeah.
And when I informed the owner that they were encroaching, the fence was moved to the proper line.
Oh.
So their fence is on, just at the edge of their property line.
Okay.
So now, but again, it's, as much as I hate to say it, extending that masonry wall. And again, I understand the masonry wall, but I'll be blatantly honest with you, I would hate to have a masonry wall built in my front yard. That would drive me absolutely bonkers. And it's, this is a very unusual situation, and, you know, the planning commission does have the ability to review the continuity of such a wall. In certain situations, it's in the ordinance. So the question is this, is it possible to continue, if only, the front yard of the house in that synthetic fence, to try to make it more aesthetically appealing for the homeowner? And again, quite honestly, it's less expensive for me to bring in masonry panels and drop them in, that there's really not that much of a difference in cost between the masonry and synthetic fencing. It just happens to be the aesthetics are horrible for the residential home. So it goes back to, I should have bought...
The house is in a somewhat unique position. We've run into it a few times before. Do you see that as an alternate, Mario?
Um...
Just where it abuts their front yard, not the entire lot.
Right. I think when it starts from the front wall of the house towards Maplewood, I could see some alternative there. I know, I'm trying to find some other alternative. Sometimes in other areas, we do allow alternatives in that front yard of the residence when it's adjacent commercial, but that's more when there's driveways. And then what we do is, we allow for the fence to be dropped down to three feet. Excuse me. In that case, but I don't know if that's really the effect. I mean, because there's no driveway, because there's no reason to worry about clear corner vision, you know, a full six-foot fence could still work. I mean, it's, it's an, it's an alternative. I'm just trying to think. And I guess in theory, that might be also consistent with the fact that you're having a resin fence on Maplewood anyway, 10 foot off the sidewalk. So if there was, if that resin fence did begin at the front wall of the, of the residence, that kind of would make more sense.
It's just, it's a consideration. And in as far as the 10-foot setback from the quote-unquote right-of-way, you know, I can understand aesthetically, having that 10-foot setback in the open air area. But along the parking lot, I really don't see the utility of it, quite honestly. It's just a matter of losing parking spaces, and it really is not going to have that much of an effect. Aesthetically speaking, having the open area in the back setback a little bit further with some pleasant landscaping, I think would, would truly enhance it. But again, a smaller landscape area on the parking lot, just on the parking lot area, I think, might serve the city better to provide more parking spaces. Honestly, everybody uses the parking lot of that building. All the adjacent businesses across the street, everybody parks there.
Why did, why did we ask for a fence up front there?
Well, there's no fence required in the parking lot area.
Yeah.
But there is a fence along the outdoor racecourse because of, for the screening and buffering, and attempt to mitigate any kind of noise. And I really think that's appropriate for that, that area.
For the track.
For the racecourse, yeah. But definitely, when he, I think, believe that he's talking about the 10-foot in the parking lot area that's required. You know, it is required along Middlebelt, and where there's no issue with that. But when it comes to Maplewood, even though, I mean, Maplewood is actually a boulevard, and so the right-of-way from Maplewood is wider than the normal standard. And the reason we ask for the 10-foot buffer on the residential side, I mean, excuse me, on the private property owner's side, is because that property, that boulevard could, or that right-of-way can be utilized for anything in the future, for any different type of transportation. They could choose to widen it, they could choose to narrow it, they could choose to add bike lanes, that sort of thing. And the issue is, in those, we, it's the ideal that we want to have, because there's so many places in the city where the sidewalk is right up against the parking lot surface. And so when a person is walking, then, you know, you don't know where the, you don't know where the parking lot ends and the sidewalk begins, and so you're going to have people crossing that boundary. So there needs to be some type of boundary identifier, and usually, it's a raised, curved, landscaped island, and 10 feet is, is the best, because that ensures that the proposed street trees and landscaping has the appropriate room to grow. A lot of times, what you're going to find out is, if you do anything smaller than that, the landscaping will exist for a little while, but eventually, it doesn't get, doesn't live, and then it's, it's too small to mow, then if it's mulched, it's not going to stay that way, and then eventually, the thing gets paved anyway. I can, I can take you around the city, and you can find those areas where those little, those little things were not, those little landscape buffers just aren't effective.
If I might ask a question, is 10 feet the standard for all zoning? If I might ask a question, is, is ten feet the standard for all zoning, the commercial zoning?
In all zoning, which, which it can fit. There are definitely other areas where there's just no, no space. And it is, and it is, it is a requirement in the ordinance for the, to have the ten-foot.
For ten feet? I just wonder how the strip mall down there got away with a much smaller-
They did that illegally. They actually had compliant, uh, well, actually, I don't know how it was originally approved, but I know their recent, the recent revisions where they ch- put in the little, little tiny bu- things and everything, all that was done illegally. That didn't, they didn't do that with any kind of permit.
Interesting.
Yeah. They just went and did it. And that, and the issue with that is that, you know, during the site plan-
Sure.
They, they did it and they agreed to do it as, as required by the ordinance and required by the DDA. Now, but then they went and then afterwards, an existing user, they said, oh, I'm just going to improve it, and they just did it how they felt. Technically, the way they should have done it, they actually should have done it with a, a brick wall. Because that's what's required in the downtown.
Yeah.
And that's in the CBD zoning.
And I had to build one.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, see?
One of the first ones.
Right, yeah. So in the CBD, they're required to have our three-foot wall. And they, they didn't, they got away with it.
The cap?
Yeah.
Yeah, but something for consideration if it's possible. And, and again, I think that the, the commission does have the ability to make some modification when it regards to this distancing, that the alternative would be approximately a two-to-three-foot landscape area along the parking lot side, and then in the open air side, have that ten-foot buffer. Okay? And I think that that's a great compromise. I'm hoping the, the commission might see it that way. It's not just for consideration, I just think that it, to be able to maintain the spirit of the distancing for the parking lot side, again, as Mario had mentioned, so there is a delineation between the sidewalk and the parking lot, I think that three-foot landscaped area is sufficient. But then further down, when we're creating this open air kind of extravagance of this having a ten-foot setback, which again, would be the place for irrigation, and a nice synthetic fence, I think makes a lot of sense. So it's just a consideration that I'm hoping y'all will think about.
It is your purview if you want to adjust that standard.
I don't know about the, about the look of the masonry wall with the adjacent property, but I do know that that's something we've adhered to very strongly throughout the years because we've tried chain link and we've tried stockade fences and all ki- I've been here 22 years. We've tried everything on, on the book and every single item has caused a problem over the, over the years. Till finally, we determined that a structural masonry wall was the only way to go. It was the only thing that had true permanence. If you, if your business were to change hands and change operations and become something else a year from now, when a business license changes from potentially you to somebody else, all the site plan remains the same, essentially.
Undoubtedly. And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not arguing the masonry fence along the residential, I'm really not. It was just, you know, it was like a, kind of like a plea from the homeowner. And so I, I just made it known, I did my duty. But as far as I'm concerned, the masonry fence, at least, the ordinance, as I understand, states that the materials have to match the building. But the building is a textured cinder block, the new portion of it. The old portion is just a standard cinder block. There is more standard cinder block than there is textured cinder block. So if I were to follow the ordinance precisely, I would build a standard cinder block wall, which I think is ugly. There are the masonry panels, similar, or smaller in scope to what they use on highways, for example.
Sure.
That they have some aesthetic appeal to them. And I assume that, Mario, you can comment on this, that that's, that type of masonry wall is acceptable as well.
Yeah.
It's not cinder block, mind you, but-
No, didn't we talk about this a couple months back when this initially came up?
We talked about synthetic.
Synthetic, okay.
Yeah, that was on the synthetic fencing, which I wouldn't want to use any non-synthetic anything anywhere.
Yeah.
It, it won't last. So, then that's fine. My, my big concern and the request was to consider the green space distance from the right-of-way on the Maplewood side.
Well, we've got two different things going here, so let's try and make a determination on one and then move to the other.
Right.
I'm going to go around the table, but I'm going to start with Mario. Your thoughts on not going with masonry structure there?
Um, I do, I mean, I di- I think in, in the end, to be consistent, I mean, you summarize it perfectly, I think, like, when it comes to being consistent with the city pattern, with the city policies, procedures and ordinances, technically that, that wall along the front is, is what served us well and served us best. And I do think the sin- the precast panels do tend to be much more attractive than just a CMU, concrete masonry unit wall. And our ordinance does allow those. So I think it's something that the, the property, current property owner would probably pleasantly surprised by the aesthetic appearance of it. And once again, we, we do this for this property owner, but also the future residential, future property owners of that residence, so.
Okay. Diane, your thoughts?
I agree with Mario.
Eric?
I like the idea of the panel. I think it's, it is a weird situation with being next to the house and that, but it's also next to the school. It'll look more appealing. That building's always been kind of ran down over years. The fact that he's putting money into it and stuff like that, I think the idea of the panels being there to look better.
Okay.
Randall?
The masonry panels.
Eric?
The masonry, it's closer to the code.
I tend to want to go with the masonry too because of how we've made that so much a standard throughout the rest of the city. And to some extent, my thoughts are, if I were to buy a house next to a commercial strip, I would expect a slightly different environment than if I were to buy a house next, between two other houses with R1, 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 R1. I would expect different things in both those cases. I wouldn't expect moving next to a business area, a commercial area, to be exactly the same as an R1 area. And I think the fact that you're talking about putting in precast panels, when you have your discussion with the DDA, there could be thought given to colors that would be appropriate to the building and the adjoining area there. And I think that would be our best solution here. So I, I think sticking with the precast panels, going with the masonry i- is the best way to go here. Now, the second thing you brought up is about the ten-foot. Let's, uh, let's dive into that a bit and see what we can twist or move around or-
I think he's just trying to shrink the distance between the parking lot and the sidewalk, which a ten feet is quite a bit.
It, it is.
Which drawing are we reflecting there? Which one are we considering here?
It's a CN2 versus CN3, I believe.
It's a number two, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Is the new- Oh, no, or is the preferred proposal? Which one are we going on?
It's number two, isn't it?
CN2?
CN2 is what technically is required of the ordinance and, and the-
That's what's required by ordinance.
Yeah, the ten-foot wide.
Now, the proposal is what?
And the CS1, excuse me. I guess it's this CS, well, both CS1 and CS2, looks like they show the-
Yeah, the, the S and the N designate, the N is complete ordinance compliance, and CS2 is perhaps a more sensical route?
Yeah, yeah, CS2-
I might be responsible for those letters, so I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the CS2 is the alternative in which the, it would be a, um, completely, in the parking lot side, just like, what was it, ten, ten forty ounce center? I can't see it.
Yeah, and perhaps the consideration is a hybrid between the two. Whereas the eastern section remains as a ten-foot area and the western section, just along the Maplewood side, obviously, Middle Belt would remain the same, but along the Maplewood side, we would retract it to that, to some odd foot area instead of the ten-foot area. Just enough to be able to plant some shrubbery.
Okay. So I'm worried about people walking their dog and the car sticking out over the sidewalk.
I'm sorry.
Because you're talking about the parking area right here.
The, correct.
Yeah. So if someone backs their car in, or say, a pickup truck, and the bed's hanging over the sidewalk, that, that's my big concern. How much distance are you, you, you-
From the sidewalk to the parking lot?
Yeah, how much, how much space are you asking for?
Bear with. Uh, from the, about three feet.
Three feet, okay.
And that would still be considered to be a green belt or at least grass at that point?
I beg your pardon.
The three-foot buffer that you're proposing now, would you have to grass?
Would, no, it would be landscaped. Shrubbery, basically.
All considered shrubbery, so that would mark the boundary of the edge of the parking lot.
Correct.
So it would be obvious to someone pulling in not to go forward.
Yeah. You would hope.
We would hope.
We would hope.
There'll be parking blocks there as well, I would imagine.
Of course. Yeah, it's required.
What's everybody's thought on that? Going from ten to three, or conceivably ten to five, something other than ten?
Ten, ten seems excessive.
Yeah, ten seems excessive.
He gains more parking too.
Let's see where we stand legally, so we'll ask Mario. Do we have a problem with shrinking that down?
No, the, the ordinance does allow you to modify the, the buffering and shielding requirements. And that's why in certain cases of where there, there isn't enough depth to provide parking, we have allowed, like, just recently on Inkster, that one Shake Shop we looked at, you did, there wasn't enough space to put any kind of, on existing site. So you do have the authority, but you know, that's, Inkster is a huge existing problem with, that's exactly what we're trying to prevent.
Yeah.
The sidewalk is right next to the parking and people are going to be backing up or their back of the truck is going to be hanging over. So ten is the ideal because it has a nice landscaped area and, and check, generally be grass. I guess in theory, it's excessive when it's against to a, a boulevarded road. So in theory, if it was shorter, I guess it could work. The only thing I think is that, it'd be nice to have the street trees there too. There's a street tree, uh, the street trees would be good. One thing I want to check.
Now, we're going to request irrigation and it hasn't been clearly that I've seen spelled out about what type of planting we're going to use there. Do you see limitations by shrinking this down with the use of irrigation and/or plantings?
The, the irrigation would still work because it would just be, you know, it's just the pipe that's, I've seen the other, the, the line that just runs through the, the ground. The only issue will be the species, because the, you know, the root system is going to be a minimal area to grow. And so we probably won't have as much space of chances-
My thoughts as well, and if it doesn't get trimmed, then it proves, it spills over into not only the parking area, but the public sidewalk area.
One thing, yeah, one thing I would say is that there are existing overhead lines from the warehouse building to the east. That's where it starts. But to the west, from, from that point of the blue building to Maple, to Middle Belt, there's no overhead lines. So that's something to consider. So it would, I guess it would make more sense to not plant the trees in the, in the parking lot adjacent to the warehouse building. Makes sense not to put them there. So using just shrubs in there, so maybe reducing that as well would make sense too. And so it's up to you whether you want that, that minute, that reduced parking, reduced buffer to continue from that point to Middle Belt, which, you can either be consistent or you can have street trees there, it's up to you guys. And I don't know if the DDA wants to lend an opinion. You don't have to.
I think it's maybe consistent. From one end up to Middle Belt, we look the best, absolutely. The DDA is, we have no issue with shrinking that space. And we don't shrubbery there. Shrubbery is, like I said, it's a period of visual. And then we'll just, if, if the shrubs grow, that's against our ordinance. You know, if they're not trimmed, the ordinance acts, it goes out and they got to be trimmed, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to put a little leeway in there because, you know, it's unlikely he's going to hire a professional landscaper to come trim them every week.
That's what handles my shrubs now.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the, the fifteen little shrubs that we have in front of that building, uh, the old post office, they're handled by the landscaper. Honestly, I, I have nothing resembling a green pump. So, and neither do my people. It's better that somebody professional handles this.
Okay, well, let's do a straw poll. Diane, what do you think?
I, I, the three feet and the ten-foot setback, I agree.
You know, we could do three, four, five, and it would still be a big difference between ten. Keep that in mind.
Mm-hmm.
Eric, what's your-
I'd say have it down three. Right now, we're only just trying to make a buffer between the sidewalk and that, that's plenty. We're not trying to block light, we're not trying to block sound up there or anything, so.
Randall, what's your thought?
Three feet's good.
Eric?
So shrink from ten to three, is that what we're talking about right now?
That's what seems to be the consensus, but that, we're, we're, we're trying to arrive at something here that works for everybody. Myself, I, I'd like to see four.
Well, let me ask you-
Not to be different, but just to add a little more leeway in there.
Christian, just a question for you. You know, how about if we went five feet all the way down, just to make it nice and consistent?
I, I think I would be in agreement with that.
I like that best of all.
Good compromise.
That solves all the issues, right?
It does.
Yeah. I think that would be-
I like that best of all, and the fact that you're putting in the sidewalks means we can do that because we don't have things in our way already. What's everybody's thought on that? Diane?
Go ahead.
Mario?
I'm good.
Randy?
Yeah, five foot's good.
Five's good, yes.
Okay. We'll make it five feet and the site plan, of course, will have to represent that-
Of course.
Before final signing.
Of course.
And that can be something that can be done administratively, which we'll get into in a minute. Anybody have any further questions on this? We have a nu- number of items under the site plan recommendation. To that, we've added about the fence, which we just talked about. We've added the DDA approval on the site plan. I'd like to see their signature on that, that they agree with what's going to be put on the final site plan. Is there anything else that anybody would like to see added to this?
The lighting cut sheets need to go on with the ref-
Lighting cut sheet?
Of course.
In the past, it seems like every lighting cut sheet is a Lithonia light.
It is, actually.
They must be the only ones that sell those lights or something, but, yeah, a cut sheet is an easy enough thing to get.
Sure.
And that, that just gets included with the final site plan.
Of course.
Uh, good point. Randy? Randall? Anything?
Nothing else.
Eric?
I think we're good.
Diane?
I think we're good.
We can do this all administratively.
Yeah.
Yeah, technically, you have two questions in front of you. One is a special use approval, would, should be a recommendation to city council. And then, you know, a city council can choose to pick it up or they could just, they will determine if they just endorse your, your recommend, your recommendation, whatever that is. And then the second would be site plan contingent upon receiving special use approval.
That being said-
So, just point of order before we go into more, is, is what I would recommend first is do the, the special land use because site plan is contingent upon special land use and without special land use, site plan's kind of a moot point.
Okay.
And then when we go to site plan approval, if you'd like me to read back the notations to make sure that, you know, everything is good-
Okay, that would be good and then we can-
We can do that before you make the motion.
We'll go back.
So can I make a motion to pass special aid use?
This would be, yeah, so we are, as a recommending body, so you would make a motion to recommend approval.
This is the special land use. Can I get a motion for special land use on this?
I'll make a motion for that.
Second, Eric and Diane second it?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll vote- And we'll vote on that.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Steenberg?
Aye.
Now, on the site plan review, you want to read back what you have and what you've added?
Yes.
And we'll seek a motion after that.
Yeah, so let me read back what we've got and if there's anything else that needs to be added, we can do that. Is, so site plan, you would make a motion to recommend site plan approval contingent upon these following criteria. And we have, this is kind of a hybrid of what Mario had had initially and what we've added.
Sure.
We have a revised elevation sheet that includes the materials and colors for the building facade, which the DDA will then sign off on final approval once they've determined color and materials.
All right.
A revised landscape plan that indicates the size of the landscape materials. That's your, you know, your species and your trees.
Okay.
A revised lighting plan, which includes the mounting height, light levels and utilized fixtures, which are completely shielded and directed downwards.
Cut sheet, okay.
Then there's your, yeah, there's your cut, yeah. And then dumpster enclosure detailed elevation drawings.
Okay.
We have the pre-cut masonry panels that would be used for the wall along the east side, you know, that runs alongside the residential address.
Okay.
A five-foot setback that will run the length of maple wood, where instead of doing the 10 foot, it's five foot throughout from maple wood to the end of the property, or from Middle Belt to the end of the property line.
Okay.
Confirmation that the use of the southern parking lot be used, you know, if it's being used as an outdoor asphalt track, shall only be done after obtaining a temporary use permit. And then a submittal of grading plans that should be reviewed by the city engineer.
Sounds good. We get a motion here?
I'll motion to pass the site plan review based on everything he just said.
With the following.
It's a part.
You didn't memorize all that?
Right on through.
Okay, and Diane second it?
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Steenberg?
Aye.
All right.
Excellent.
I think you're good to go.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
We'll send the special use permit on to the, on to the city council. I'm not sure, will that be on their next meeting or no, the meeting after?
I should be able to do it because I believe the next meeting, if the next meeting is April 19th, we should be able to get it on that agenda. Because there's no requirement for an additional public hearing now. We've modified those standards.
Sure.
So you don't have, they don't do their own public hearing, you've already been through a public hearing, so it'll be, that should be the 19th.
So if you'd like to attend and, you know, let them know that you're here if they happen to have any questions, that might help speed the process along.
Certainly.
But not required. So, sounds like you're, you're just about there.
Hopefully so, thank you.
And we welcome you.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
I can remember buying two-by-fours at Maplewood Lumber back when you could diagonally park on Middle Belt and it was two lanes with no left turn lane. But I'm old and it's been empty a long time or underutilized for a long time. So it'll be fabulous to see that put back into a beautiful condition and it sounds like it's going to be.
And especially a clean use.
Yes, yeah.
These days, it's difficult to find a nice, clean.
Family activity and all, yeah.
So.
It'd be fabulous.
Thank you.
I wish you luck.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. And then Mario, hopefully we can communicate at the beginning of the week.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
And thanks for investing in Garden City. Okay. So both parts of G are good. Onto the annual report. Do you want to give us your thumbnail and Mario and we'll go from there?
So every year, the planning commission should be providing the city council a summary of all their accomplishments. And so this is a brief summary, goes into, you know, just how many meetings we had, even though, you know, last, this past year has been very challenging. We were, I think, the fact that we were able to have 10 meetings was pretty good. We were able, we were able to modify, to pivot and to pivot to Zoom and up until recently, I think it's been serving us well.
We all had to scramble to find appropriate backgrounds to cover up the fact we were sitting on the edge of the bed or something.
Yep. So we just go through that and then it briefly summarizes the various projects, site plan reviews that the commission has considered and approved and what they've gone through, special land uses, the other types of reviews such as because of COVID, you know, we did grant some special extension, well, standard extensions of site plan approvals, considered a couple rezonings that didn't go through. And then all the, and then, you know, zoning ordinance amendments, we've done a pretty good job, I think, of tackling a multitude of small issues, but that I think are really, were really fundamental to making ordinance more efficient, leaner and hopefully address, allow for more investment in the city because we, you know, I've already utilized some of the modified parking standards to make sure that uses have appropriate parking because it does reflect, you know, how a site functions more than our, than just what we used to do in the past. So that's just a summary report and it's something that, like you said, gets submitted, that with your approval, with your eventual approval, could be forwarded to council for their review. But then also, you take this opportunity to consider a proposed action plan. The action plan is supposed to try and lay out some steps and activities that the planning commission or the city could undertake in terms of planning activities for the next year. Now, a lot of, sometimes these are things that we'd like to do, but, you know, the business items tend to stack up from time to times and then the business items are the ones that, you know, we have to, we have to, is our primary function for the planning commission, doing all our site plans and special uses and that. But this was a proposal and I know some of these might seem new, like new items to you guys and it might not, and it's more, some of them are a little bit more administrative. So, because Fred pointed that out last, when we, when he, he provided that comment to me when I, when I showed him this draft. And it is true that some of these are more just planning related, but I think as the planning commission, you know, the council would be looking to you guys to see what your opinion would be on the types of planning activities that the city undertakes. One thing, so the first item on there that's been an ongoing effort, more of the city manager and then also the DDA, was the idea of creating a downtown park in the parking lot the city owns on north of Ford Road and east of Middle Belt. So behind Garden City Cafe and behind the Beaumont, we have, that's, the majority of that is all city land. There's a small part of it that is owned by Beaumont that goes far in the back. The idea would be to create a civic square and something that would, you know, normally, like basically like, and I can't remember, is it Kellogg Park in Plymouth?
Well, Plymouth has something adjacent to.
Yeah, I can't remember what that's called.
Square downtown.
Yeah, yeah, whatever that's called, like in front of the Penn Theater and everything. So something dissimilar to that where, but it would be more active. So what has happened already is that the DDA has talked to adjacent property owners and some other interested parties and they've, they've at least agreed that the concept of something like that would be appropriate. Now, when it comes to something like this, you know, there's a lot of design and ideas that need to get hashed out before that to happen. And so a lot of planning has to get involved. So this, this proposal would just be to consider taking that next step of doing design and implementation, plan for this park. Because when you have something like that, a big thing about it is you can identify the funding sources, like different grants from the MDNR and other places that could facilitate this. And then also, it also is intended to build up public buy-in, the idea that this would be a good idea. So that's just an idea and it's, you know, something, it is a big planning project. I know, once again, it might not necessarily be undertaken by the planning commission on its own, but I think if you weighed in on it, hopefully we could have a planning commission member, you know, be, participate in this process. Because it makes sense to have the planning commission talk about planning and that sort of thing.
They already use it during all their events, too, like all the stuff they have.
Lucky squirrel or whatever.
Yep.
Chili cook area.
Chili cook off, yeah.
Right, and so the idea would be to create more permanent, a different configuration that would be, once again, more of a park-type setting and then, and have like a focal point to it and have areas that can be utilized for different events, pop-ups, you know, that sort of thing.
They did that in the city of Wayne, it's called Gaudi Park, and they turned that into a small area that had live bands.
Yep, exactly, yeah, live bands and like a lot of summers in the park kind of activities, yep.
Now, of course, there's a lot of conversation that has to happen before anything else will, but it would be nice if that could be done in such a manner with a lot of doors around the exterior where it could be opened in the, in the good weather, but it could be used for like trunk or treat at that time of year and possibly Santa at that time of year and farmer's market, even if the weather was inclement, maybe there could be roll doors or something like that.
Well, I definitely think the idea is, the initial idea has been to be more about green space and open space, but I will say, there has been a lot of suggestions lately from what I hear of those different types of infrastructure. For example, different type of bollards that have electric service or like even water, portable water connections and that sort of thing. So like, so you create these different units. So how that gets done and designed would be part of this process. Because getting down to that level of design detail, whether there are structures that have designated storage and can be rolled up and that thing, or whether there's more open area, that's what this envisions, going through that process, making those decisions so that you have a final detailed plan that could then be, get to the next level, which would be funding and construction.
Two questions, would that involve visioning sessions with the public?
Absolutely.
And does McKenna write grants?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, these kind of things that we work to, you know, fund, look so we can find the proper additional funding.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So that's just, like I said, it's something that has been prevalent in other aspects and I thought it was appropriate to bring it to your attention and to help you get involved with it. And I think you providing council some opinion on it would be, would be, you know, within your purview. There's other, the next thing, I guess is a little, is a bit more of an administrative side thing, so it doesn't necessarily have to be included in your project, but basically the services that we've been providing have, I've been, let's just say, fully utilizing my time for the city because we have been going through quite a bit in terms of not only just project reviews and then the day-to-day permits, the reviews, but also the various ordinance revisions that we've been going through. So I think that was just the idea of looking at expanding services. But once again, you could, it's up to you whether you want to weigh in on that at all or if you prefer to like not have that as part of your report. Similarly, one other thing is a little bit, kind of straddles the line between administration and more long-term planning is just the idea of technically the parcel base map for the city is no longer updated by Wayne County and it's a significant tool that can help with the day-to-day activities, but also the future planning for the city. Because we, all different individual lot splits and everything. For example, I just was working extensively with the assessor on a proposal for a lot split and road configuration for Belton and Tipton Academy and everything, they want us to do some lot splits, but it turns out that Belton, when they created it, they never dedicated it as a public road. So technically, it exists right now on private property. It exists on the church's property. And that's just one of those things that, you know, I'm sure at some point that we all thought it happened and it probably did, it just one step might have, you know, ended up not being completed and then suddenly it never, technically, technically the public road doesn't exist. So that means even though it's a small segment, technically that segment of the road doesn't get Act 51 money, technically. So updating the GIS map would go through the city, find any of those little quirks and try and clean those things up and that sort of thing. And then, and then add built-in there a little thing for day-to-day things. So once again, this isn't something that, I see Fred's point, so it might not necessarily be a full-blown planning commission effort, but it's, if you wanted to weigh your opinion on that, you could leave it in there. And then one thing that's always important that I think to always remind the council of is ongoing training for the members. You know, I think a lot of, some of you have benefited from that and it helps. And the good thing is, due with COVID, we've all become used to the Zoom training, Zoom, utilizing Zoom or videos and so even though it isn't, isn't as great as meeting in person, you know, it's a, it's a, definitely a more economical way of going through training. And so it's something that maybe could be, council could consider dedicating more funds to, or because it would be a greater return on that investment. So it was just a point to include that. And this is an idea, too, like if there's other projects you feel the planning commission wants to take up, we can put that in this project list as well.
Does anybody else have anything they would like to see added to this? What we decide goes on this list, we'll get forwarded to council so they can see it's part of the process. So if anybody has any ideas about something that else might want to be included in this, we can do that now. Anything come to mind?
I was aware we were going to do that.
Diane? Anything? No, it sounds good. Remind me what GIS is, I've used it before, but I forget what the initials stand.
It's, technically means geographic information systems, it's the computer maps. It's maps that will show your parcel and then when you click on it, shows your property ID number, size of the property, zoning.
Well, the fact, the fact that they discontinued this back in whatever time that was.
2015.
Been quite a few years and I can only guess that we have a number of alley vacations that are not officially listed anywhere, so we still show them as alleys. So yeah, that's, that's a good thing as well. I don't have anything to add to it either, so I can see this being forwarded to city council. Nobody has any additions or deletions to it? Okay. And we have draft ordinance here.
Oh, Commissioner.
Do you have to make a motion on that?
So yeah, so if someone wants to make a motion to transmit the annual report and recommendations to council.
Okay, I'll make the motion, what do you say? Okay, Randy makes the motion, Eric second?
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Steenberg?
Aye.
All right. Now we have this draft ordinance for.
Nope, that's the one that got removed at the start of the.
That's H, that was removed.
That's the original agenda.
Okay.
You're looking at the old agenda.
Okay, has everybody reviewed that? We're going to vote on this tonight?
No, so the item H was what was removed from the agenda at the start. That's the one that's actually a food and business, or food and beverage regulation, so it's not necessarily under the planning and zoning.
This is all that?
So it's, yeah.
All the truck, okay.
Yep, so we're now at commissioner comments, is what.
All right. Other business? Anybody?
Any word on Lifetime? What they're, if they're going to.
LA Fitness?
For LA Fitness?
We haven't heard from them lately, they, anytime we do make contact, they, they say, oh yeah, we're just analyzing the market, we'll be starting soon. I will say, and I forgot to drive by again, I, we were able to get them to move the fence for Ford Road access, then the latest effort was to move the fence to get Beechwood access, I think they did that. I'm not sure.
No, not Beechwood.
Okay, well, that's, so that's in our ongoing discussions with them.
Okay.
Where eventually we, I believe that the Ford Road, we got to the point where we said, if you want to, if you want us to move it, we'll move it because we needed the businesses that were on Ford Road to have access. So this is a similar situation to let people have access to Beechwood. Because they're not, because the intent of that fence was supposed. not, because the intent of that fence was supposedly to have all their staging area for all their equipment.
They removed the trailer though.
Yeah, exactly. So if they're not doing construction, we might as well have that access point.
Two things about that concern me. Number one, they removed their trailer. And I don't know if that was just the demolition people that, that was their trailer, because generally on a project, that construction trailer is about the last thing to be moved off the property.
First thing in and last thing out.
When they hand the keys over to the new owners. That concerns me. And also, why they didn't break up any of the floor and the foundation when the weather would have allowed that. I know we have frost laws that would have limited the amount of weight with the carry-away, but those two things concern me. So if we can stay in close contact with them, I'd like to make sure we do, because I don't want to see that project go away.
Yeah, no, we're definitely trying to work with them to see how it would go.
COVID may have made that horrible timing too.
And, yeah. And so they may have had workers that weren't available and there's a lot of different reasons.
In general, at this time.
When the trailer-
I had the cash flow.
When the trailer left, I said, uh-oh, that's not a good sign in my book, but CVS and Dunkin' Donuts.
So, for the CVS, the vacant CVS, right there on, next to Aldi's, they actually, we went through approvals, they went through variances for a banquet hall, and then that person said, you know, they couldn't get through COVID and say, why invest with a banquet hall if people can't even gather?
Right.
So it actually was sold and there was, and there is someone that has applied for a COO for a furniture store. So they're gonna be a furniture store. They initially started work without any permits, so we eventually had, that's how we found out about it, but they have now submitted for permits and they, the COO has been approved and they are submitting building permits for their interior construction. And every, and the use, they're only doing the interior renovations and putting in some new windows. So that's why it didn't need to come to you. That, a furniture store use is permitted by right in that district, so it didn't need any, and they aren't changing the building sufficiently enough to warrant Planning Commission-
So after the time we allotted to them over a number of different meetings, they didn't even bother to inform us that they sold it?
No.
We find out by accident?
Yeah.
Okay. So CVS and LA Fitness, how about Dunkin' Donuts? Are they still on their extension and-
No, Dunkin' Donuts-
Incommunicado or?
They, they've been past their extension now, so if they, yeah, they're just, if they wanted to do construction, they'd have to come back and go through approvals all over again. So they didn't, yeah, we haven't heard from them. Last we heard, and this was a couple of years, at least a year ago, if not 18 months now, they, they had overextended in other, other cities, and so they were putting us on the back burner for the moment. But apparently, yeah.
That particular owner owns the one on Wayne Road in Plymouth. Beautiful building to take advantage of the narrow lot. They made it narrow and tall. It's a mock two-story. It's a very attractive building, not terribly large.
I need to eat some coffee.
Yeah, coffee and donuts, just drive-through.
I don't know how popular donuts are. I shouldn't be eating any, but.
Is there any update on Albert's on the alley?
Out, the, the banquet hall that's going to Albert's on the alley, they are, they, they say they're getting ready to get their submittals for their approval, for building permits. Because we did grant them an extension last year. They have until, I believe, October to get their approvals, but they do intend to begin oper, begin construction.
What about on Inkster between Sheridan and Florence? There's all kinds of construction going on there.
Yeah, that was-
Maybe a boxing place or something?
Yeah, that's-
Good Burger?
Yep. What it was is, it was a tenant in one of the buildings purchased property to the south of him to build a brand-new Good Burger. And the project did any, did not increase the square footage, so that's why it didn't necessarily trigger any kind of site plan review from the Planning Commission. They've just, yeah, the extensive rebuilds is more than what we originally anticipated. Yeah. Well luckily, the square footage didn't get any bigger, so if it did, then you would have seen it, but, but, and then, and then what, the space they occupied in the building to the north, the gym that didn't have approvals, finally did, did get approvals to operate in there. And then the rest of the, the units north of that in that same building, right in that corner, an existing unit was replaced with a tea place, and then an existing restaurant expanded. It's gonna-
There's all kinds of stuff going on.
Yeah, they, and, and they, they have gotten, gone through the approvals and, and because technically they are increasing the square footage and the uses are permitted by right in that C2 district, that's why we could do that administratively. The issue with them is gonna, all gonna be, because they're restaurants and they're increasing square footage, they're, I mean, occupying more of the existing building, they, their parking is gonna be, is limited, extremely limited, so the capacity in the buildings is going to be limited. We're gonna have to, the fire marshal's gonna be putting in very minimal, you know, in concert with the parking standards for that area, because, for example, the gym, you know, and he's, apparently it's by appointment, even though it's a pretty, pretty, it's a big space, and he's got a boxing ring in there and everything.
He had the one storefront, then he took over the-
Right, yeah.
Have to go over there and look, jeez, I didn't-
But the issue, but it's, but because of that, he says he only needs it by appointment only, so the capacity in there is gonna be like three people. Because there's not enough parking in that area. So it's, it's gonna be interesting to see how they function moving forward.
Okay, so we got the new stuff on Inkster, we got Dunkin', we got CVS. With all our many, many discussions with McDonald's, one of the things I was interested in being is how we have a, a very small park on the opposite corner. We were able to get the monument sign rather than the typical overhead McDonald's sign. As part of what my input was, I was looking to have a bench, either on both sides of that or surrounding that, because they already have the outdoor dining. And I just thought of that, maybe people out for a walk might sit there.
The bus stop there too, right?
Busy intersection and stuff, but I thought that became part of the site plan. And it hasn't been built that way. I've asked about it before. So what do we know about the bench at McDonald's?
Yeah, I believe that-
I'd like a review of the final site plan and see if it states a bench. Because where that sign is at, I don't want to see a half a dozen posies playing it there. I'd like to see a bench. And I thought that was part of our plan.
I do know that when the site plan, when they're completing construction, it was during the winter months. And so that's why they didn't necessarily put in all their landscaping. If you notice, they didn't put in their fencing in the, in the wall until recently. So I will check and, and see, because I do believe that we had the bench on there, on the site plan. So maybe that's one of the final elements that needs to be installed.
And I can understand their construction was throughout the winter and certain things probably weren't all that important at the moment. And if you were gonna add a bench and anchor it into that sign, you'd need probably to epoxy the brackets into the cement columns. So maybe the weather didn't allow for that, temperature-wise. But I'd like to look into that.
Absolutely.
And do a dive on the actual signed site plan.
Yep.
Who's our secretary to sign off?
I haven't signed off anything, because I was gonna ask that. I have not, since I've been secretary, I've not signed any plans.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while, because the plans, we haven't even approved, so. But we'll get those, because for example, the next one, the first one will probably be the tea place, because they, well, theirs is just a little sheet. But this one will be one, the RC course, that'll be the first one. And I'll look back.
Because I even thought, a couple of years ago, at the gas station on Ford Road in Vinoy, where they did some remodeling, I thought we, they were supposed to put a bench out there, a new bench for the bus stop. That's not there.
I kind of thought that too, but it wasn't my recommendation, so.
I remember, I remember we talked about it and they agreed to it, and that bench is still not there. But I wasn't secretary at that time.
Well, it's a secretary. Maybe you need to look at those site plans and see what's what there.
Well, we'll get, I'll get them to you. We can call and talk about coming in to look at them.
So we have questions about two different benches. Anybody else got questions?
Just a quick question on that Shell Station. Is that, we, we got a final plan okayed, right?
We did, and if you recall, that we had the original plan that had a very elaborate facade, and then when the, when the applicant went and discovered that they had to do extensive structural improvements of the building, they wanted to change that outdoor facade to what we originally did, brought it before you guys, and then I believe the consensus was to get the DDA's input. And the DDA was okay with the revised facade, provided the colors were the appropriate colors. So that's why it's been going up the way it has. And, and they believe that it's gonna be okay to use, to paint those, those, those concrete blocks, so.
Was the parking, wasn't that lot behind that supposed to be parking?
It is, and it's going to be. I mean, that's what the approved site plan was, and they're, they're gonna have to do that. So. They also ran into issues with leaking underground storage tanks when they started construction. The building inspector, when he went out the first day, the first thing he smelled was gasoline, so. And originally, we thought they were gonna be treated like gas stations were in the past and get shut down and deal with it initially. But apparently, the state says that they could continue operating as long as they do contingent mitigation. I'm not sure how it is that they, but apparently the state signed off on them doing it, because the intent is to take out those existing pumps and existing tanks and put, or, I believe they're gonna take out the tanks too, they're gonna, I mean, I would think, and then put in new pumps in there, because after the building is constructed. So apparently the state told our building department that they're okay with whatever method the applicant used to mitigate the leaks.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought for sure that project was gonna stop dead in its tracks, but.
Yeah, that, because that expired also, like the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they expired several times, but they came back.
I was gonna say about three times, I think.
They did.
I believe it came for us three times. What, real quick, one more, Mario, the, Hannah Pen Ford, or Ron and Ford Road, just west of Vinoy, was the VFW that was sold. And there were people asking about, was that gonna become a drive-in, drive-through restaurant to get?
It was approved-
By COVID or what happened?
I'm not sure if it was a COVID thing, because I do believe, when I looked at it at one point, that that expired even prior to COVID. I believe that, and they did, because I actually, I believe in, actually today, I ended up talking to the property owner, because they, they're into, they, he was trying to try various different uses that go into the, into the, that site, and I'm gonna have to work with him on what's appropriate, because certain issues, certain things aren't, it's, it's not Zone C3, it's Zone C2, so it has to be done the correct way. But the, what the previously approved drive-through expired prior to COVID, to my, to my knowledge.
That was a ghost restaurant. We were never told what it was gonna be.
Oh.
Just that they were looking for-
They asked for feasibility. What was the feasibility, what they put in their drive-through?
So somebody wanted to keep that way under wraps, because with, with all the conversations we had with them way back when, we never got a clue.
Really? Huh. Maybe that's why they pulled out, because they-
Well, the lot's not terribly wide, but it's awful deep. Awful deep.
Lot of parking spots.
And back, way back when, I gotta believe it probably expired three-plus years ago. Because that was going back some time.
Yeah, that shit's all getting vacant though, and that needs to be, something needs to happen.
Yeah. Anything else? Ryan, do you have anything?
No, I was gonna say, based on the summary that we had from last year, where the first thing on there was the CVS, I was gonna say that I found out today that there's business going in there. But the furniture store did come in and they applied for their, you know, for their business license this afternoon. So, once they complete their inspections and get a valid COO and police do their background check, then, you know, they can, can open in there.
Do we know the name of it? Do we know the name of the furniture store?
Happy- Happy Home Furniture, I think. Happy Home Furniture.
Is it, are they looking at a niche market or?
I think it is, I think they do have another location, based on where they, where their LLC is, is incorporated in, so. But I think that they may have other, you know, other businesses as well.
And they're white and all the rest of them, Loves and what's the other?
Loves is gone.
Yeah. All right. Anything else?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Third, fourth.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All righty. On one road there.
Value City, I think.
Value City, yeah. They bought the art vans or-
No, Value City's still open.
Value Furniture, right next to that trampoline, they're, they're done.
When did they, I was just there.
That was just-
They got art vans now on Wayne Road.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if they're leasing it or buying it or?
I bought from Bob's Discount.
Yeah?
No voice in the sky.
The voice in the wall.
They no touch it.
Yeah.
I didn't say anything inappropriate.